December the first, first thing is approval of the agenda and we do have an addition.
Move to approve with the addition.
Second.
Got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin to approve the agenda with the addition. All in favor, roll call.
To Mr. Whalen.
Aye.
To Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
To Mr. Haney.
Aye.
To Mr. Mojo.
Aye.
To Mr. Gross.
Aye. Okay, did we get any citizens' response then?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we got the minutes from November the 17th to be approved, will we need a motion on that?
Someone.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin to approve the minutes from November 17th. Any discussion? Roll call.
To Mr. Whalen.
Aye.
To Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
To Mr. Haney.
Aye.
To Mr. Mojo.
Aye.
To Mr. Gross.
Aye. Then we have the bills and vouchers.
No approval.
Got a motion by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Grant to approve the bills and vouchers. You guys don't get in on this because you're a little bit, I think you're on delay or something, but whatever. Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant to approve the bills and vouchers. Roll call.
To Mr. Whalen.
Aye.
To Mr. Campbell.
Aye.
To Mr. Haney.
Aye.
To Mr. Mojo.
Aye.
To Mr. Gross.
Aye. Okay, now I'll go back to what I skipped there, sorry about that. We employ recognition today.
And we have 15 years for Stacy Bilstock. Is she here?
Yes.
Yes, Stacy is here. Stacy, for 15 years, this is present in grateful recognition of 50 years of standing and dedicated service to the Clay County innocent. Thank you so much for your service here. Rory, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Can I use your microphone?
Sure.
I stole Stacy from the state auditors about 15 years ago, obviously, and thank goodness I did.
Nothing like stealing from an auditor.
She does a great job preparing our financial statements, and she really is a true leader. She's willing to step up and step in whenever she's needed, as my coworkers can attest over here, and thank you for your awesomeness.
Okay, with that, we're gonna go with Kathy McKay and Cheryl and Jamie. You were wondering what to call us last while ago, the Three White Musketeers or something?
Amigos.
Yeah. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. You should all have the handout of the data, our typical information that we hand out. So we're looking at our positive cases of 5,089 in Clay County as of yesterday, 57 deaths. In our 14-day case rate per 10,000, we are watching this number rise. As you can see, it's at 183.28, so it definitely continues to rise. And then in Minnesota, our total positive cases are a little over 318,000. Cumulative deaths are 3593 at this point. The positivity rate in the state of Minnesota is 7.4%. Now, on the back page of the whole stapled information, we have Cass County's numbers as well, of 16,788 cases. They have 126 deaths, and their North Dakota's cumulative positive rate is 22.63. So they continue to be high as well with their numbers. As you look at, so the second page shows the graph of, just a graph covering the information about the total cases and the number of deaths, and then those no longer needing isolation, so after their 10 days of isolation, then they're out of isolation, is what we talk about. And then the grid that shows each of the weeks, starting from March, where we're looking at confirmed cases, those no longer needing isolation deaths and active cases. So it varies a little bit just because of the date, so as of November 25th is our last date of those numbers. But as we've talked about previously, you can see how much they've risen even since September. So each week, for a while, it was in the 100, 150, 180 range. Then in October, it started, we started seeing quite an additional number of cases in the 200 to 300s, and now we're well into the 600s in November. So each week, that's the number of cases that are increasing. So it's no wonder that those that are doing the contact tracing and case investigation, you know, really have their hands full, both with MDH and our own staff providing that contact in case investigation. And then we also, on the graph, the last page where we show the cumulative cases, again, it's just showing the age ranges. The first graph is the one we typically put out with the age ranges of cumulative cases in Clay County. And again, you see the 20 to 24 at the highest, and then the 15 to 19, 25 to 29, and 30 to 34. So that's the typical age ranges of the cumulative. You also then see the second graph that Commissioner Campbell had requested, we had this last week as well, that shows the active cases. So it's giving you the age ranges of the active cases. So, you know, it's a little bit of a difference in the active cases and the cumulative, but nonetheless, it's still showing that the segment that is the highest age ranges. But we're, so we're still seeing basically the 15 to 19, those ages of 10 to 14 are increasing as well with the number of active cases. So you can see the spread of those cases and the different age ranges that we're seeing currently. And it still kind of goes to the factor that, you know, we continue to be the voice of, you know, trying to maintain the public health measures that we talk about, the social distancing, the masking, all of those measures. And, you know, it's great when people are complying with that because we do want to keep businesses open and we do want to, you know, ensure that we have safe school systems for the kids. So we really, you know, that's the point. It's not a punishment to try to follow these measures, it's really to try to keep our whole community safe. And I know there's, it's hard and there's people out there that aren't complying, but if you think about, we're doing this to keep the people around you safe and trying to maintain our economy and the schools. So, I mean, it's, there's a method to why we really are pushing that, you know, really not doing large crowds. We talked about that before Thanksgiving, you know, really not doing the large gatherings that you typically are used to. Now, we know that there's a lot of people that comply, but we also know there's people that did not when they talked about no travel. There's a lot of travel going on for Thanksgiving, and although it's a hardship, you know, I mean, we do this for a reason. We want people to be safe, we don't want to see, we want to see these cases come down. We want to, you know, reduce the amount of people that are dying from COVID. So there's a reason why we talk about all those public health measures. So it's just the reality until we get the vaccine, and we'll be talking about the vaccine in a couple minutes. So, any questions on the data that was passed out?
Kathy, can you explain for the public asymptomatic? Again?
Yes, so there are, there's a number of people that are asymptomatic that have the virus. And typically what we say when we do our case investigation and contact tracing is you can be asymptomatic and spread to others. So you don't feel ill, you don't have the cough, body aches, you don't have any of the symptoms, but you still have the virus circulating, and it's contagious, so you can still spread it. So what we do when we talk to people is when you become symptomatic, you have to go back 48 hours because you were infectious 48 hours before you developed symptoms. And so at that point, you can spread it. So when people say, "I was well, I felt good," that's true, but you still, it doesn't mean that you didn't have the virus. So when you, especially when you're doing the gatherings, well, everybody felt well, we were all okay. You can still spread it, you can still have the virus circulating and you can still spread it. And typically, we're seeing that. So someone may become symptomatic and we're telling them, "You must go back for 48 hours and then determine who you were in close contact with because you can spread it as an asymptomatic spreader." And we do have a lot of asymptomatic spreaders. There's a lot of people out there that don't have symptoms, they've been in groups, and that's a lot of the spread we're seeing in the community.
I would imagine that, looking at, I really like the Clay County chart here with active. That really tells a lot to me, I think. And again, it looks like that 15 to 44 is really a strong area for these active cases. And I can only imagine then that in that same group, there's probably a significant number of asymptomatic people.
Correct.
And I just don't know if those people are getting the message of asymptomatic and that they can be out there. And this goes to the social distancing and the mask wearing and why it's so important to do it. You know, I just heard on national news today that there was some counties in one state, some were, had a mask mandate and others didn't. And the counties that had, that did not had a rise in cases compared to those. And I'm not suggesting, you know, I mean, everybody just needs to wear their mask.
Right.
But education, I think, is so important. And I don't know that, I don't know that enough people understand what asymptomatic means.
Yeah, I think that's good and we can get more of that out as we do more of the media information.
Just, you know, in your conversations with people, just ask them, just ask them if they can explain it, and my guess is they won't be able to.
Yeah, I think you're right about that, there just needs to be more education. And, you know, wearing the mask, it's not fun, but once you've done it for a number of months, you just, it's just a habit. Just put your mask on and, I mean, it just, it becomes kind of a habit to, and it's a good thing we have something before we get the vaccine. But I'll let Jamie talk about some of that information.
I'll talk about some of the highlights from the Governor's conference, then we'll let Cheryl share the good news about vaccines. So yesterday, the press conference with the Governor, just, you know, I know Kathy shared the numbers, but just a few things to highlight. That hospitalizations have tripled since mid-October. So really looking at the 25% of the hospitalizations in Minnesota, the non-ICU are COVID patients, and 35% of the ICU beds in Minnesota are COVID patients. So the Governor's just kind of trying to tell the public, like, what has changed. The case rates of the week of November 8th through the 14th were nine times higher than the peak the week of May, in May, our highest in May. So nine times higher than in May. More than a third of the Minnesota counties have a weekly case rate of 100 cases per 100,000 people. And that 10 times higher than what is considered a high threshold of 10 cases per 100,000 people. So those were some of the things that he pointed out as far as changes. And then he shared some of his final thoughts being that this is the worst spot we've been in since March right now. MDH will look at the data in the next few weeks to see the effect of the four-week dial-back period. So really just explaining why we're doing what we're doing in Minnesota right now. And then I also just wanted to share information we've talked briefly about, but there is the opportunity for antibodies treatment for COVID now. It's for high-risk people and that's age 65 and older, and those with chronic health conditions. It's a one-time IV antibiotic, antibody treatment, and it is available in our community.
Jamie, did you say 65 or 55?
65.
65?
Sorry, I forgot the mask.
Yeah, I know.
And those with chronic health conditions. If you're younger than that, it would be also. So the idea is for, to catch people with chronic health conditions and the elderly prior to hospitalization for that one-time IV transmission of antibodies, which is available in our community now. And then, let's see. Also wanted to talk a little bit about our homeless population. We've had an opportunity to partner with Minnesota Department of Health and our homeless population, those that serve our homeless population, and they did a testing this last week of all people in the shelter. And there was a 25% positivity rate. So Rory Beal, our Health Promotions Director, who's working closely with the shelter, was busy helping to move those that were positive tests because anyone who's a positive test, we moved them to our hotel that we're partnering with. And that was to isolate those that were positive. But also wanted to note that of all of those, 25% that were tested that were positive, only one of them had symptoms. So back to what, you know, we talked about the asymptomatic, they were all positive. And so in partnering with Minnesota Department of Health, they will be testing every week. But in the meantime, because of the close quarters, the homeless shelters are quarantined. And again, they'll continue to test weekly through the end of the year to identify positive cases. So anyone who's positive and moved out of the shelter, anyone in the shelter is quarantined. And you're aware of the grants that we've used to serve the homeless population. I spoke with Rory Beal before I came, and we are at about $70,000 that we have left. He's anticipating that we would run out of money mid-January. However, he has recently submitted an app for, he and Kathy have submitted an app from DHS, that would carry us through June if that application is approved as well. Anything you want to add to that?
I think you covered it.
Okay. Oh, and I just want to finally just note that we talked quite a bit about the Minnesota COVID app. I want to encourage people to download the app, it's very simple, the way it works, I did it. It is actually, if you just Google Minnesota COVID app, it'll pop up for you and it'll give you all kinds of information about how it works, the process. There also is, so basically, if you test positive when you're contacted by a case investigator, you're given a code, you enter the code into the app yourself, so it's you that's agreeing to share that information. And what it does is it communicates with any phones that would have been within 15 minutes, within six feet for more than 15 minutes in any place. So it doesn't say where you were, it just notifies you. So if I enter my code, you would get a notification if you were close to me for more than 15 minutes. It'll let you know, it doesn't tell you where, just that you were in close contact and that you should quarantine. If I get a positive test, if I go get tested and the case investigator hasn't called me within a few days, I can call the Minnesota Department of Health and I can get that code. The code is only given to you if you are proven to have a positive test, so it's not something that you can do. And then we talked a little bit about the cross-border thing, and it does actually, if you have the app on the North Dakota side, it does communicate with anyone as long as the state is participating, North Dakota is. Okay.
So, Ms. Chair, can you explain, so, and I asked this in an email to you. So if I tested positive and I got a code, at some point in time, you're no longer contagious. So at some point, does that information of mine come off? Or is it gonna stay on six months from now and I'm within six feet of somebody for 15 minutes? Or is it just gonna still tell them that they were in close contact?
No, because basically what it is, is I don't, I can't find anything that says it's wiped out, but basically the focus is on the infectious period. So once I get that positive test, hopefully I'm isolating so there would be no contacts around me.
Right.
But before that, the infectious period, we talk about going back that 48-hour period of time. If I were continuing to not follow the isolation and I was around people, they would continue to get notified during my infectious period, which is a 10-day period of time, and then that's it.
Okay. You know, because I don't want to put false worries into people either, that they're gonna, you know. I tested positive for COVID on September 28th, you know, and certainly if I'm within, I don't want them getting a warning because of me now and...
And that wouldn't be the case if you didn't have a code to enter into the app.
Right, right, yeah, but had I had a code.
Right, right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, and then Cheryl will talk about some of our testing site and vaccine information.
Good morning. So for our vault saliva testing site, I have some numbers from the week of November 22nd. There were 4,503 tests conducted that week. For Minnesota residents that were tested was 2,440. Non-Minnesota residents were 2,063. Total number with results available was 2,415. There were 417 positive results with a positivity rate for that week of 17.27%. So they were closed for three days during Thanksgiving week last week, but they're back up and running and people are utilizing it. We still have, are taking calls from people that are wondering where they can go be tested in Clay County, and so we are definitely sharing that information with them. And I think, I know that there, we have no idea what the end date is going to be for this test site. We were initially told it was going to be probably towards the end of this year, but we haven't heard anything different. So knowing with the spikes that Minnesota has had, you know, we keep waiting to hear from Minnesota Department of Health if they're gonna be able to extend their contract with Vault into the new year, which I think most people would be grateful for because it's been a tremendous opportunity for people to be tested.
That is still a seven-day operation now, isn't it?
Back to seven days, yes. They were just closed for three days last week for the holidays, so.
But they're not, yeah.
Ms. Chair, I got a couple more, I apologize for the questions, but it's
That's okay.
Good chance to get the information for the public. The people that have been going to that test site, are they asked if they have been experiencing symptoms or not?
Yes, it takes you through a course of questions, a series of questions that you have to answer. And yes, whether or not you have been exposed, whether or not you're having symptoms, those are two of the questions that it does ask.
I'm just, I'm kind of curious as to data that might come from that to, you know, are 50% of the people going there because they're concerned that they have it? Or are they just, are they going there because maybe they're interested to find out if they might be asymptomatic? You know, there can be different reasons for going.
Right, and I've taken a number of calls from people. Some people have said they have to travel for work and they need to have, they need to have a test done before they go.
Sure.
Because rapid tests are not readily available for everyone in our community. Some people are saying that they have to take care of a grandchild or someone like that, and they will go for those reasons. So I think it's really all of the above. People are going because they've had symptoms, they may feel like they may have had an exposure at work or out in the community, and they're going for lots of various reasons. But I have taken calls from people that say, asking me, "Is it okay? I don't have any symptoms, but I'm concerned that I may have been exposed. Is it all right for me to go to that testing site?" Absolutely.
And then one last thing, and I guess maybe not for today, but maybe when you come back next week to, I'd be interested to know a little bit more about antibiotic testing.
Okay.
And what are, is there any research out there? I know before we've talked about that period of maybe 90 to 120 days. If you've had it, you might be free from getting it again. Is there any more new data on that? We don't have to talk about it today, but maybe if you could come back to us.
Sure.
And then also, is there a way for those who could be tested to find out if they have the antibodies? And if so, where would they go? And that goes back to the plasma deal.
Great, absolutely, we can get that information for you.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on the test site, or testing at all?
Jenny or Jim, do you have anything?
Jenny looked like she's trying to say something here.
Jenny looks like you froze up on us. We just lost her.
She'll probably return.
Yes, from reading the state website, we tested almost 100,000 people statewide a couple days ago, didn't we?
I do not have that information with me.
Not in Minnesota Department of Health, by the second page.
Okay. Yeah, they have, on the first page, we have the approximate number of completed tests cumulatively. So they've got a cumulative number, but I don't have just a weekly number on that.
That's other page, that's other page.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so next, just gonna give you a little brief update about our vaccine planning for COVID-19 vaccine. We are actually on track with our vaccine planning for COVID-19. Our initial vaccine, which will be Pfizer, is the manufacturer, and that is for ultra-cold storage. And that, from what we are, we meet about three, four times a week with MDH, with our West Central Healthcare Coalition and that. And of course, things can change on a daily basis, as everyone realizes. But we're actually ahead of the game with our planning. Surveys have been sent out to long-term care facilities to basically just assess their capabilities to be able to vaccinate their healthcare workers if they have vaccine storage, those types of things, and any resources, because it just helps local public health know what the long-term care resources are so that we know how much support we would need to help them provide. So the initial Pfizer vaccine, from what we hear, and we have another meeting today, this afternoon with Minnesota Department of Health, should be coming sometime mid-December. Of course, those doses are going to be a limited amount since from what we know right now is they will be going to hospitals and healthcare workers. And then within a week or two after that, the Moderna vaccine, which is a frozen, under frozen, normal frozen conditions, not the ultra-cold, which is about 80 below, will be coming about two weeks later. And we're still waiting to hear, at the federal level, they're still determining the different phase groups of who will receive that initial Pfizer vaccine. And then the next level would be, of course, the Moderna vaccine, which again is under the frozen. So it will be much easier for local public health to help manage. We have storage capability for that type of vaccine and how that will be distributed. So we're waiting to hear how those phases are going to So we're, we're waiting to hear how those phases are going to roll out, who's going to be included, because they're still, um, still having conversations about that, so. But we, like I say, we, we have meetings, um, practically daily with either our regional healthcare coalition or also with Minnesota Department of Health, so.
So the, the, is my understanding the Pfizer vaccine requires two doses?
Um, as far as I know, they all will require two doses, yes.
Okay. So the number that you get when you turn, in terms of vaccinations, you really got to divide that by two?
Correct, and it's not just getting a second vaccine, but getting the same vaccine the second time that you received initially is important as well. So if you received a Pfizer vaccine, uh, the first round, that is what you need to get the second time also. So there's, um, many decisions that are being, uh, decided um, at the state and federal level to help figure out, um, how to accomplish this goal. So it's a, it's a huge undertaking.
We have a vaccination plan that Josh from my, um, office has created, and this is due to the state, so we have to submit our, there's no signature required by the board, but we have to submit our public health vaccination plan, um, by Friday. So we're working on the final, finalization of that plan.
Do you see, um, uh, obviously, we talked about this during our CARES committee meetings. And, and because of the limitations on, on when we had to spend those funds, uh, we don't have funds right now, local funds, uh, from the CARES.
Right.
For that, do, do you anticipate a large expenditure in, in, in providing that vaccine to everybody? Is that something that we need to start preparing for, and are we going to get some federal state help?
Yes, we, um, the vaccine, there will, you know, that will be provided to us, um, at no charge to the, the local jurisdictions, um, as well as, um, some of the syringes, et cetera, that go with that. But it will be a large undertaking if we need to, and, and we will, in some way, shape or form, need to provide some mass dispensing. We know that, like Cheryl talked about with the long-term care, um, it's very helpful that they can provide their own vaccinations within their facilities, um, the healthcare systems as well, so that's helpful. We have some, uh, two pharmacies that have, um, entered into a provider agreement to provide, uh, vaccines, so that would be helpful for local public health. But there's still a large portion out there that we expect to be responsible for mass dispensing. So I anticipate there will be a lot of, um, it will take a lot of, um, staff resources to provide the mass dispensing site. And, and we don't anticipate, um, doing the general population, of course, until into 2021. I mean, there's going to be a delay because they are going to work with the critical and essential workers first. Um, so they'll have their phases. So we anticipate that, um, it will be, you know, maybe into the spring before we'll need a mass dispensing of the general population. More of that detail to, to be worked out. Other questions that we, that you may have for any of us?
Hi, Jenny, are you on back on again, or are you just?
Yes, I'm on.
Okay.
I'm just having trouble with my Wi-Fi, so I'm shot in the video.
Okay, very good. Do you have any questions, or?
I should also, just one, one more addition besides the vaccination plan. We need to enter into a provider agreement as well. Even public health needs to enter into that, um, with the state. So we're just finalizing our numbers of critical and essential, um, workers. And once we've completed that, we have the medical director, um, that we utilize that has already provided the signature. Um, and we meet all the requirements for vaccine, uh, distribution. So we'll be submitting that. That also does not require, um, a board, uh, signature on that, um, authorization. But just so you know, we'll be entering into that and hopefully submitting it today.
All right. Thank you so much for that update again, very informative. Kathy, if you want to just stay there, uh, we'll take some of your. You got a request for public health messaging?
Yes, um, we talked about this at the CARES committee, and we initially, um, there was a request for messaging. Um, and we've worked with a, a number of the radio stations. And we have messaging out, um, and social media, of course, on our websites. Uh, but there's also a need to get more messaging out and the, so we've entered into contracts with the, or we will, once the board approves of that, um, initial request of 7,000. And when we get, uh, so the, the amount we spend, they also match that. So we'll have additional, um, ability to provide a lot of messaging when the, the stations match that. But we, we, there was a couple other stations that we felt like would also be a good use of, um, the CARES money to get more information out that, and, and it covers our area. Um, a couple of other radio stations. We did focus on, on those stations that particularly, um, as they tell us, hit the, the 18 to 35-year-olds, but we also want to hit the others. So there's an additional request of 3,000 that we discussed at the CARES meeting on Monday, um, to, to cover the additional two radio stations. So then we really feel like we've, really will have a wide range of, of coverage for all of the media. There's some media, um, information that the state wants us to get out, and there's also information that we're working in our region with local public health agencies to get information out to the public.
I see you're putting in their radio ads. Are you talking about TV ads also, or just?
Uh, we, we talked with TV stations and they will do interviews with us. Uh, but they, we won't necessarily, certainly don't have to pay for those. So they're, they're very willing to do, um, those informational pieces with us, so.
Mr. Chair, we did talk about this at CARES, as Kathy mentioned, and, and I think there was support amongst our committee to, um, add that extra 3,000 to the seven, so I would, I would, um, move that we authorize that additional $3,000 for, um, ad campaign for COVID.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant to authorize additional 3,000 to the seven, is it? 3,000 in addition to the 7,000, or?
Yes.
Okay.
And that, those would come out of the CARES dollars.
And from the CARE fund, okay. Any further discussion? Real call.
Commissioner Wayland.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Heaney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Is she on mute?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes, all right. Okay. With, with that, we're going to, uh, the amended one, we have an amendment. The DGF school contract, excuse me there, I guess we had some interference, so. You, we've had a resignation from the DGF school district, school nurse, uh, so we need to replace that.
Well, um, thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Uh, this came to Jamie's and my attention, um, actually, it was probably on Friday, but we talked with the superintendent yesterday. They, they, we already have, um, one school nurse in the DGF district, but there's a, a lot, they need a lot more than just one nurse to cover that district. And he has come to realize that, they had additional help, but it's just not enough. He is requesting another RN. So we have one RN per contract, um, with, um, public health. That person is someone that we hire to provide, um, school nurse services, uh, to DGF. And so he's, he, his preference is that we, um, have that person as, as a public health person because of the support. Jamie supervises all the school nurses, um, that are part of our, um, our employees. And it works out really well to have that supervision and the public health backing. So this superintendent recognizes the need to have the additional RN, um, to cover those services. Um, and would really, um, to fill a gap, he's really requesting that if we can find someone to start yet in December. And so I, um, and it would be a, a second contract, or, or we could amend the first one. We have a contract for, for one nurse, so we could technically amend that. What we charge, the school will cover the cost of that nurse, both salary and fringe benefits. Um, and so the number of school days is typically 170 to 180, so we factored that in for the school days. So this person would work. Um, we've worked with HR on this kind of, um, arrangement with school nurses because, again, it's about nine months out of the year. And then, so if we do a point six, then that person would be seven hours a day full-time for the school during the school year and would fulfill that, although they would get paid, um, throughout the year. So they'd still get their benefits, um, benefit package as a point six. So the point six would cover the needs for that school district. Um, and then they would be paying for all of this. There would be, um, no additional cost to the county. And so it was really, we could amend this contract, or we could, uh, send out an additional one. We can work with the superintendent on that if this board approves, um, for us to move forward. Any questions on that, or anything, Jamie, that I didn't add?
No, just, you know, we've talked about the value for public health even because, um, we can, we can accomplish a lot through working in partnership with our school nurses. And so it just keeps us very connected to that district. And it's nice that the superintendent has repeatedly noted his, um, appreciation for that relationship that he has with the county as well. Um, the, the need is, is great, and so that's why he's asking now. They are, um, it's a contract, our school nurse is a point eight right now. Um, the current RN, because she covers in the clinic for us in the summertime, so we can do some of our work out in the community. And, um, so this one would be a point six, so they are different. Uh, we are a little bit concerned about filling that, uh, because of the point six, but it will meet the needs. I know the board has talked about the importance of the school districts covering that cost, that full cost.
I, I think it's important too, that, you know, sometimes we say, well, there's going to be no cost to the county. Well, there is, because the school has to play for it.
The school pays, correct.
We get taxed by the school too, so to tell the people in the county that, uh, there'll be no cost to you, it, it will be, so.
I'll move to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin to approve the contract with the DGF school for a point six, uh, school nurse. Uh, any further discussion? Real call.
Commissioner Wayland.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Heaney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Okay, thank you for your work.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Okay, now we'll go into an update of the CARES Act Committee, Committee. Our county administrator, Mr. Larson, and, uh, HR Director Darren.
Good, uh, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Today is, uh, is a, will hopefully be a short update. Uh, today is the, the last day, December 1st, uh, that we are allowed to spend our CARES dollars. Uh, we have a final report that goes into the state on December 9th, and then if there are any remaining funds, uh, have to be returned to the state by December 10th. Uh, we're, we're pleased to report, uh, that should the, this board approve all the, uh, the, uh, additional items before them this morning, that, that all funds, uh, 7,843,443 dollars uh, will be expended by Clay County, uh, through, through this process. In the coming weeks, uh, we're going to be meeting as a smaller committee, uh, to finalize the committee work, uh, and also do some work in preparation of the audit that we'll be having later this year. Really do want to, to, to reach out and acknowledge and appreciate, uh, the work of our Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo and their leadership that they provided, uh, during, uh, this time. They kept us, uh, on task and, and also challenged us to make sure that we were looking in all the, all the best avenues uh, to spend the money, uh, to make the biggest impact here in Clay County. And so I also thank this board, uh, for their willingness to, to be flexible with us and, and provide latitude as far as bringing items, uh, to the agenda, uh, agenda additions each week. Recognizing that, uh, in many cases, we needed to, to get those requests in, uh, as we were challenged many times to, as everybody's looking for the same items. And so we thank, thank the, thank the board, uh, for that. We're going to be providing an updated, uh, categories list once we finalize, uh, everything, uh, here over the next week. Uh, and, and kind of, I'll provide the recap. Otherwise, you have anything else, Darren?
Okay, any questions for the, our gentleman there? Well, thanks for the update, and thanks for spending all that money.
Mr. Chair, I, I, you know, I mentioned to the, uh, CARES committee yesterday that, uh, you know, the appreciation that we have towards all of those people that served on that CARES committee. Uh, there was an awful lot of in-depth work done. And I, I think, uh, I think we've done a good job, and you, all of you did a good job in terms of, I gave an example, I went over to look at the DMV facility over there, and there was Mark Sloan over there. He was out putting the signs out throughout the mall, you know, all, all these little details that were so closely uh, worked on, and, and, um, so hats off to each and every one of you who served on that committee.
And I, I have to thank you that, I mean, when I say thanks for spending all that money, I mean, coordinating all that money, I mean, that was, uh, I'm thankful. Were you talking about seven and a, was it point eight million dollars, or seven point five, whatever it was? I mean, that was a heck of a task to do there, to divide that out amongst the county. And, uh, uh, thank you so much for, for, well, for the commissioners and for you guys who, that was a heck of a task. So sometimes getting money, you know, just to hear some money, go spend it, that's a, it's a difficult decision. And very good decisions were made. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we go with the Mark, uh, you and Josh going to take, uh, show us the body cameras.
Good morning, thanks for having us this morning.
Okay, Mark.
Um, we did get our body cammed, as you can see, on both Lieutenant Schroder and myself. Um, we're starting to roll those up this week already, so, uh, these are very nice to have. You've, uh, I've been using this now since, uh, Wednesday of last week. Um, I've gotten it a couple different times, use it at night and things like that, just to see what the video quality would be like. It's, it's great video quality at night, great video quality during the day. Um, the audio was really good. I'm very happy to have these, and I'll have Lieutenant Schroder kind of go into the functions of them and how they work, but, um, I just want to thank the board for your support of this program because I, I believe that these are going to save and assist us in a lot of different investigations, and build transparency and accountability for our department as we move forward with these. So these are, these are going to be a good tool for us as we move forward.
Are they, are they going to be any way cumbersome as far as you have them on you? I mean, if you're involved in a conflict with somebody, would you throw it off, or would you keep it on, or?
This will stay on, it, uh, it holds on here by a magnet right now, and it's, it's pretty, it's a pretty sturdy magnet, so I can take this off right now, just like that, just a little button right up here. And then this base that's here is a very sturdy magnet, um, that has like a plate on the back side. I don't foresee this really coming off during any type of a, a struggle. The other agencies that are using body cameras currently, like they're worth, they haven't had theirs fall off yet. Um, so I, I foresee these to be staying right on us. The only thing you got to do, really, is make sure your seatbelt is above it or below it, so it's not, it's not covering your camera, it's not damaging your lens. That's really the only thing I've noticed so far.
That typically wouldn't be on when you're driving, all right? Do you have, do you have, do you have in-car cameras?
We do, um, but this, this would be on.
If need be.
In position. Okay, I'll get it back on there, but the only time this would turn on, and that'll be a function of Josh and one or two, will be the lights are turned on, and we'll turn it on, so.
Yeah, and it's, it's always on and powered up when the deputies are on shift. They're supposed to have it on and at least ready to go. That way, if they do manually activate the record button, it'll come on. It does have a 15-second pre-event on it, so if, if I push the button now, it actually records what happened 15 seconds ago and captures that. So that's kind of a nice feature, just in the event of something does happen and then we trip it, then that event is captured. It also, uh, like you talked about with it being here, if it's going to get in the way of anything. Essentially, with a lot of the, with a lot of the staff wearing their mics and different things, like Mark has his up on his lapel, but some guys will wear them down here or wherever, it's just kind of another thing that's just kind of there. So, um, as far as right now, nobody's really recognized an issue with them kind of being cumbersome or anything. It's, it's almost unnoticed after you wear it for a couple of days.
Okay.
Um, they do have, uh, internal storage themselves, so we're able to use them all day long and record multiple videos at the end of the day. We have a docking station in the patrol room that, uh, Clay County IT assisted with hooking up. So we can come in at the end of our shift, plug it into the docking station, the videos go right into our current watch guard server program on site. And we have equipment getting installed in the cars to integrate with the in-car camera, because this is the same company with our in-car cameras. So essentially, what that's going to do is, if I'm in my squad, driving around. So essentially, what that's gonna do is, if I'm in my squad driving around and I activate my in-car camera, this'll turn on and everything just glues together as one incident, essentially. So my body camera footage along with my car camera footage will all be linked together. So when it comes to court cases or different things, we can send it all over to the county attorney or city attorney's office in one file. So it's nothing we have to search for or anything like that. And there's only a couple of functions on here, so they're super easy to use for doing your record options. Um, we select different categories for videos that we're gonna save. Uh, the reason we have different categories is because the servers are always purging videos off of there, depending on timeframes. So we have test categories, if you're just testing your camera. Uh, no citations, if we don't write a ticket, but we do a traffic stop. And those hold for certain amounts of time, just depending on what it is. And then they fall off the system. That's why we've been so lucky with our servers being able to retain a lot, so. Um, but all in all, they've been really good. We've had them, just kind of slowly sharing them out for the last week and a half. I've had this one on since Monday of last week, and it's been really nice. The video quality's great. So can't thank you guys enough for allowing us to purchase them.
Yep, Mr. Chair, that goes, my, uh, my question was on how, how often the storage piece, I think, can become, you know, that's a lot of, a lot of video?
It is, it is a lot of video. So each of the categories retains for a certain amount of time. If it's a test recording, it doesn't retain, I think it's only like seven days for a test recording. If it's no citation, I believe that's for ninety days. If it's a citation, it's a year. And it's, um, a surge or soon it stays longer, or rest stays longer. So every time, um, or every day we activate these, there's videos coming on the server, videos coming off the server. The last time we looked at our server, um, we had fifty-four hundred videos on there, and only six percent of the server was being used. And that was two years' worth of video from our in-car cameras. So I think we're, we'll have plenty of server space, and that was where we're thinking two years ago when we purchased our in-car cams, knowing that these were gonna eventually become a nail in the pipe. We just bought a beefier server at that time. That's why we were able to get into our body camera program now for forty-five, for forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. And after we met with the, um, the representative from the company, we ended up getting more for less, is what it was. We, our initial bid was forty-five thousand. We sat down with him. He identified some things that we did not need, but he also identified some things that we needed. So all in all, it was a more for less type situation. It was five hundred dollars less.
Okay, so now these cameras, they're just recording. They don't transmit to a central station that's in your office or something like that, that you can watch with all your officers? I mean, if they decide to go shopping somewhere, can you, do you see that, or no, or they're just recording?
So we, we activate it with this little button here, or with our squads. It starts to record, and then we'll, we'll turn it off, categorize it. And then later, when we come back to the office, we'll either dock it or have it upload, and then we can watch it later. But, um, we, I mean, if somebody's just out shopping, or if they're getting gas, or there are things like that, it's not recording at that time.
You have to activate it to record, okay. So it's not, you don't have them on all the time, it's on your body?
It's powered on, it's just not recording. That's what that green light is, so that just tells me that it's powered on.
Okay.
But it's not recording. So that was.
I was just wondering whether it's, uh, you know, as, as a department, whether we're getting involved in, boy, you're really watching us, you know, really, uh, getting too, too much watch, you know, over all the people.
I think what he's asking is, could you sit in your office, Sheriff, and watch live?
No.
No, we'd not be able to. We'd not be able to watch it live. Uh, I think a testament to our deputies is that the ones that we have issued these out so far, not one of them has kind of said, you know, why do we need these, or, you know, this is ridiculous. Every one of them has only wanted one of these, um, for a while, because they know how, how well they work. So, I, it's, it's very good to have really good, positive, um, feedback from, from the staff that'll be wearing it as well.
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I mean, that is, I didn't know how intricate they're gonna be, you know, that as far as watching and stuff like that, so. But no, I'm glad to hear that, okay?
Good work, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you for bringing that up, Josh and Mark. So, did you say everybody's got them now, or is that the?
We have them all. I've been distributing them as the staff has come on shift. So I have some on nights, some on days. I just have a handful more that I gotta issue out. So I just, as I see them passing in through the office, I do a short training with them, and then I issue them out, so.
Okay.
So most of the people will have them by now, but, so you'll see us running around with these on us.
Very good. Thank you for.
Thank you. Very much appreciate it.
Yep.
Okay, without, we're going to Solid Waste. Kirk, uh, purchase equipment for a citizen drop-off area at the landfill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I brought a little assistance along. Brett Rice is the site manager, as many of you know. And he did a lot of the heavy lifting as far as the, uh, the equipment, uh, to find the best possible price so we could find. What I'm coming before you with today is the, to finish off, essentially, the citizen drop-off equipment that we need to have. And it's in the attachment that you have. It includes fencing for thirty-seven thousand dollars, a hook truck and four roll-off containers for sixty-four thousand dollars, a semi-tractor to haul leachate and water and all kinds of things for thirty-one thousand dollars, and then a recycling container for seven thousand, uh, three hundred, for a total of a hundred and forty thousand dollars. As I said, uh, we talked about this, uh, with, uh, Grant and also Everett last week. And I think it was pretty well received about what we tried to do out there. Um, it's in the attachment that we passed out. If you have any questions, Brett has the answers. So with that, I'll turn it over to you for any questions you have.
Well, I was just gonna say that, uh, we, we had lengthy discussion about this, and I think I mentioned it at last week's meeting, uh, out at the landfill. And I, I, I was impressed, I think Everett was too, at the work that Brett and staff did, you know, to come up with these, this equipment and these, at these numbers. I mean, we looked at, like, we asked, you know, like a hook truck, what's a new hook truck cost? Well, just a truck is what was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for, you know, for a new truck, if that's what we had to, to, to go to. And they did a lot of work, and, and they're difficult to find, but they were able to do that. And, and ones that will serve our needs and are in good shape. And so I would, you know, I commend you guys for the work you did on this, so.
Questions? So the hook truck, that, that really stays on-site, right? It pretty much will take these things when they're full, and then you take them up to, to dump them?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Or, or, um, in some cases, will any of it be recyclable?
Recyclable and over to the demolition landfill as well. There's a lot of different, uh, potential uses for it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, one of the things that, uh, with the hook truck, there's a lot of different options that we can apply it to. Uh, one of the things that, uh, there's a real need for us to, you have a new water truck to keep the dust down out there. Uh, we don't wanna buy a, a water truck. So what we hope to do is have an attachment that we can use as part of the, uh, the hook truck to use as a watering truck. Um, so that's one thing that, uh, that we're talking about doing. Another thing that, uh, we've talked about doing is, is that we've been having folks, uh, haul our demolition material over to the demolition landfill. Uh, with this particular hu- hook truck, we can do that ourselves, and we can save some money on that. Uh, final thing that we looked at trying to do is with this recycling container, uh, instead of having somebody else haul for our recycling that we have occur out of the landfill, we'll actually, uh, be able to do that ourselves. So the hook truck is a pretty versatile truck, but it's, as, as Commissioner Campbell mentioned, it's gonna be pretty limited as far as its use.
Okay, and then, um, I apologize for not being at that meeting, but I had a dentist who thought he needed to, you know, put some terror into me that day. But, uh, the, um, the semi-tractor, so that's a second semi-tractor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, it's a second, uh, semi-tractor. Essentially, uh, as we've talked about many times here, uh, we've just had, uh, an inordinate, inordinate amount of leachate that we've had to haul. And, uh, for the, uh, month of, uh, of November, we spent about eight thousand dollars just on transportation alone. And so what we hope to do with the second truck is, uh, we hope to, uh, be able to recoup some of those expenses fairly quickly. In addition, uh, and this is probably more critical, um, we have to haul material over to Perom. You know, we, we have to haul at least two loads over there on a, on a daily basis. Uh, there's times when the.
But doesn't that, doesn't that come from Morehead?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, uh, no. We, uh, we haul it primarily. Uh, we are the ones that haul it. And there are times when we, uh, we don't have, uh, the truck, the main semi-tractor available. And Morehead is, uh, not available because of, uh, driver limitation on their part. So this would give us the opportunity to provide more flexibility in that.
So do, so do we go to Morehead Transfer Station and pick it up, and then take it to Perom?
Yes, yes, that's exactly what we do. Two trips, we try and do two trips a, a day. Um, and as you know, sometimes, uh, if we can't get over there for the two trips, we have an extra trailer that we can try and get three trips.
And what, what did Brett, you said, what was the cost if we have to miss some of those loads because of truck breakdown or not a truck?
Per load, if we miss, is approximately twenty-four hundred dollars.
Well, yeah, I've, I've.
It's expensive, yeah.
I've been arguing that that's been something we need to get up to that eighty-four hundred ton, because we pay for it anyway. So that's, that makes sense, I guess.
Okay, if you buy some extra crib, do you have storage for that out there? I mean, I realize you got storage, I mean, is there inside storage for this?
Uh, Ms. Chairman, uh, yes, we do. Uh, one of the things that, uh, as you remember, when we built the new building out there, we had the extra, uh, extra stall that's available for that, that equipment. So it would all be stored inside, especially in the work time.
So how much recycling, I mean, where we're buying the recycling bin? Do people bring recycling out there? Do, what do you do with it now?
We have Fox sanitation, pick up our totes. It's a recycling tote system, so it's essentially just a garbage can, a bunch of garbage cans. And it's severely undersized. A lot of the rural people, they'll stockpile their recycling and come in with one load and essentially fill up, uh, two or three garbage cans just in one load, so.
Okay. Very good.
One of the things, uh, and, and, uh, you know, we can talk about this maybe more later, but, um, and, and I think Grant, uh, you can speak to this probably as well. Uh, but we've got a lot of progress done as far as the, uh, the citizen drop-off. I mean, that, uh, it's gonna be, uh, they hope to have it done by the middle of December. So coming up in the next two weeks, that'll be completely done. Uh, the fencing, uh, they, uh, they hope to get started on the fencing on Thursday, and hopefully get that completed by the, uh, the weekend. The, uh, the cell expansion that we have been involved with, that's completely done. The only thing that we're waiting for now is the boiler. Um, the boiler, we expect to get that in January or February. So, um, hopefully, uh, this project at the landfill is just about done. And then we can start on the transfer station and the, uh, uh, prom material facility.
When you say you're waiting for the boiler, are we gonna be burning methane gas? Is that what you're?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yes, we're gonna be burning methane gas, and we're actually going to, uh, heat that building out there. Um, the, uh, the highway department and the solid waste department building.
Should you have to replace, are we replacing the furnace that, or boiler that's out there now, or?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we aren't replacing it. It's just gonna be, uh, it's gonna be, it's still gonna be there. So, uh, you know, we're gonna have all kinds of redundancy available. Uh, but, uh, this is an opportunity for free fuel, essentially, for, forever.
Very good.
It's about the only, only chance or best chance to use that methane, and I think it's a really, uh, real positive thing to do.
Okay. All righty.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin to approve the request to purchase the fencing, the hook truck, semi-tractor, recycling container. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Mojo. Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Okay, thank you for your work out there.
Thank you, thank you.
Kimberly, come on, change an online access subscription fee.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
So currently, my office offers online subscription access through a program called Vareto. Um, I am requesting that we change my fee schedule and add a plan that would start at thirty dollars a month. This would offer, um, service up to a hundred minutes a month. I'm finding that I have a lot of customers who maybe won't take the jump and pay that sixty dollars, and I'd like to get more people to use my online access. So I would request approval of this today.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant, to approve the request for this thirty-dollar-a-month access fee. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, as long as you're there, we got some, uh, scanning project that you're working on?
Yes, I, um, brought to the CARES Committee another scanning project. This would be the remaining of the books that I would want to put onto my online access. This would include all of the mortgage books, grant or grantee books, and track books for our office. So I received a quote of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars and change. I would request approximately a hundred and forty thousand dollars of the remaining CARES funds for this. And then the remaining fund balance would come from my Recorder's Office Technology Fund.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Maybe I can give, uh, we, we talked about this, um, at our last two CARES meeting. Kimberly gave us a presentation on it and, and why it would, um, fit in and qualify for CARES funds. It certainly is something that can, um, help with the social distancing and people not having to come into our facility. Uh, it brings a lot of positive standpoints in that regard. Plus, it's just a, um, huge saving on staff time, I think. Uh, so, so we talked about this, and I, I think what, what she's talking about there, and she says the hundred and forty, I think what, what we agreed to, uh, was after what we did this morning with the three thousand extra into the advertising. We, Lori, yesterday told us, we had about a hundred and fifty thousand. Give her, she was still finalizing some numbers. And so we figured that there could be a hundred and forty to a hundred and forty-five. We won't know that exact number, probably till, Lori will probably know it today. But I, the whole idea was whatever dollars was left available in CARES should go to this. That was the recommendation. So whether it's a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-five, a hundred and forty-eight, whatever that number is, we, we want that to come out of CARES, so.
Okay. Very good.
My other comment was, uh, you know, I think Kimberly could probably explain how this will really streamline service to our citizens and, um, could potentially, um, change staff makeup in the future to save us some dollars as well. It will definitely be for itself.
Yeah, with, you know, being limited access to our office, we are having to provide more of these searching services for the people that are not able to come in. And so during this time, we've used a lot of staff time to make copies of different things that just are not online. If we had had all this, we would have, it would have been great. So I think in the future, it'll be something that will be utilized significantly by our real estate researchers.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the request.
Yeah, and that would be the balance of the CARES dollars available?
Yep.
Okay, I would second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin, to approve for as much as we got in the CARES Act, to fulfill this project. Uh, any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye.
Thanks, and I, I do think we should point out, um, and maybe Kimberly, you can, obviously, the quote we have on that is, uh, more than what there are in CARES dollars. Do, can you share with the board what your intentions are for that, that difference?
Yeah, so the Recorder's Office has a technology fund that was implemented in two thousand and five. That helps, it's for my office, only to help with different technology needs for our office. And so I do have a fund balance in there, and I would be able to cover the remaining of what's over and above what CARE dollars I can receive.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Dave and Justin, we're going to talk about County State Eight Highway 14 shoulder widening.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
We've got before you our final contract voucher for the paving and shoulder widening on County 14. That's a project that has state aid dollars, and it's also got some federal dollars attached to it as well for the shoulder widening. And I had Justin just give you a little update on the project and then the amount to be approved.
So the project turned out very good. There was one overrun in the area over the bridge. Typically, well, before the milling overlay, that area rolled really rough, so we milled out an additional inch and a half and put an additional lift of asphalt there. That's accounts for the $27,000 overrun. So the amount that we'd be looking to get approved would be $496,523.76.
The contractor was Mark Santa Grau, a lot of Fergus Falls. And we did take a look back just to see where we were at like a year ago, like on our five-year plan. And we had initially planned for $550,000. Now, those are just planning estimates when we put our plan together, but the original bid came in at 472, and then with the little overrun over the bridge, we're at 496. So we're still about 50,000 under from what we had on our five-year plan a year ago.
Project was completed on time, and we think it turned out very good.
I'll move to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Grant, second by Kevin, to approve the request to finalize the County State Eight Highway 14. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You going right back to the office, or you got five minutes after?
Yeah, I can stick around.
Okay. All right, we'll go with committee reports. Jenny, you want to start us out today?
Sorry, I wasn't ready for you. Let's see, last week, we had a, let's see, our CARES Act committee meeting yesterday that covered the issues that we addressed today, and I believe that was all in the courts.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, we had a highway tracking committee meeting. We did talk about a couple of projects that are involved in the Comstock area that's been agreed to be done through the diversion project. So we're trying to coordinate timing of when those projects would be done with our engineers and with the diversion authority. I think the diversion authority is in the position, the sooner the better. They would like to see that was done, so. And then we did talk about some 2021 equipment replacement issues in terms of pickups. A CASA III speed study, which is the area right up here by Johnson Park, that's been discussed a lot, and we've had citizens petitions regarding trying to lower that traffic speed limit in the Johnson Park area. Our engineer did finally receive notification from MINDOT that it does not meet the specifications to be able to lower that speed limit. I'm sure it's going to be disappointing to some people in that neighborhood, and I think we need to continue to look at that when we have a park that's gaining in, in public use and bicycle use and walking use along that area. So it's unfortunate, but MINDOT sets the rules, not the county board and not the city. Then, we talked about that Turn Lane project in Glendon. That's, they're having a kickoff meeting on that. And then finally, the CASA I project that's County Road I up north in Oakport that goes from County Road 90, was 93, I forget what the number is now, but 71st Avenue to Highway 26. And they're having some right-of-way issues, getting the right-of-way. So it may require us to switch projects from County One to something else and based on, within our five-year plan. So if we, if we aren't successful in getting that right-of-way, that road might end up falling back on the schedule.
Yeah.
So, but I mean, that's, it is what it is, and we can't, we can't delay other projects from being done if that one, or we need to move up if that one can't be done. Then, yesterday, we had the CARES meeting, and I think that's been fully talked about today. And we, like, like Steve said, we do plan on having maybe one or two more meetings, and it's to finalize everything up and to make sure that we have the appropriate documentation for what will be an audit of, of the CARES funds. So we want to make sure that all, all of our paperwork is in line and descriptions of what we use the money for. So that concludes my report.
Okay. Jim?
I see not everything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I have one meeting, which is the Highway Tracking Committee meeting, which Kevin has pretty well explained. I don't know if he talked about the turning lane in Glendon. I don't know if he brought that up or not, but that's, that's going to happen next summer. Just information, next Monday, December 7, we got that annual meeting. I don't know how many people signed up to be on that. I don't know if everybody's on that or not. Next Tuesday, reminder that the meeting starts at 5:00 in the afternoon, not at 8:30 in the morning. So next Tuesday, 5:00 meeting, and Truth and Taxation at 6:00. Steve?
I like, Mr. Chair.
You skipped me, Frank, so. He thinks I'm gone already.
You only got a month left.
I just, I had a, I had a couple of meetings in the last week, both, one with Cass County and one in the City of Morehead regarding the Joint Dispatch Center that we're involved in. And both meetings, I thought, were, were good meetings, and, and we came to some resolution with both Cass County and the city in terms of the future of the dispatch center, which was all good news, and that was it for me.
Mr. Chair, I do want to add that I did attend the dispatch meeting with Cass County last week.
Sorry about that. My old age is showing a little bit. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To, just to touch on last Tuesday, I participated in highway tracking. We also talked about CASA 52 and County Road 12. They've received some federal highway dollars of doing some turning lanes there in the project next year. Yes, on Tuesday afternoon, I participated in the closing of the building, the 35th Avenue South. On Wednesday, worked with Clyde McCarthy and staff on some of the layout of that building. Yesterday, we met the CARES, which has been addressed by Commissioner Campbell and Mojo. Also, met with Clyde McCarthy again and went through 3D rendering of the space and also looked at the caseworks and, and cabinetry needed in the building. That afternoon, met with Darren and Brian Melton on a number of county issues, and also met with the, with the city and with Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Whalen in regards to the dispatch center. I did, just want to note for the board, we did receive notification last week that all representatives in the Wild Rice Watershed District at Becker County has petitioned Bowser to redistrict, the redistribution of managers. Essentially, Becker County feels like, like they, they should have the sole authority to appoint their representative manager. And in that request, they're also requesting a second manager position be provided to Becker County. And so to this point, Bowser has not, has not responded to this point. I'll keep the board updated there. And also, last week, we, we did have some discussion or provided a budget update, Laurie and I did, for the upcoming Truth and Taxation. We had Commissioner Campbell discuss in different, additional way that we could look to lower the levy for next year. And we, I just wanted to make sure that we had a clear, clear direction for Laurie and I to go. So the hope and goal would be that we would have the information for the board that you approve of next week, and that we wouldn't have to make, hopefully, any changes after that. So with that, I guess I would just look for some, some additional feedback from this board on, in direction of how you'd like us to move.
Mr. Chair, I, I, you know, I inquired about what I, what a 1%, 1% and 1.5% would be. And one of the things, when I originally talked about this, we, we are looking at CARES reimbursement dollars of about $780,000. The most recent number is about $1,025,000. That's coming back to us. And, and I believe the, the 1.5% would be somewhere between $500,000 and $600,000. And I, I can just tell you that I am going to be certainly making a motion and recommending that, that we reduce the levy by, by that amount. So, I don't know, you know, that's, that's, we don't do that until, what is it, the week after?
Week after, yes.
Two weeks from now.
Yeah.
But I, but I mean for, for when, when Laurie puts together those final numbers, if she wants to include that to, to show, then that's fine. But I am going to certainly be recommending that.
Okay, anything further? Back there, Brian, you got anything? Again, welcome, Jenna. Thank you for being here. We're adjourned. Oh, hold it.
I think we need to have a consensus on that. You know, I, I think that's what Steve's maybe asking for. God!
You want a consensus on Kevin's proposal?
Well, my goal, I guess, would be is that for Truth and Taxation that we bring forward, what, what wishes of this board would be. So I know that Laurie is going to be gone following, some of the following week, and so may create some challenges to, to do that.
Well, if that's, if that's the case, I'll make a motion right now that, that we take from our reimbursement dollars, or which would basically, you can also refer to it as reserve funds. Keep in mind that we used $1.2 million of reserve funds already, but that was really basically our revenues over expenditures from the previous year. So, so I would make a motion that, that we use reserve dollars to bring down the net levy by 1.5%.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second, a motion by Kevin, second by Grant, to bring down the net levy 1.5%. Any further discussion? I guess I'd like to get some more information on that before I, I don't know how that's all going to work, you know? I'm very afraid of bringing down our reserve dollars too much, and I just, I'm very concerned about it, you know? I just, I know it's going to...
Mr. Chair, I don't, I don't think we're bringing down the reserve balance. I think we're, if we don't do it, we'd be increasing our reserve balance. That's-
Well, okay.
I think, Mr. Chair, like Commissioner Campbell speaking of, is, so we, part of our categories is reimbursing, reimbursing the county for some of the funds through CARES dollars, and we would be looking to utilize, some of those, some of those funds that we, that we provided, that we paid for were for plexiglass, for signage. But there are also, we had the ability to, to take certain positions, such as Kathy's position, and reimburse her salaries. And so those funds were already essentially set aside in this budget. So that is to what Commissioner Campbell is alluding, is those funds are in this budget. We essentially are paying ourselves back, and so they would be, would be funds that wouldn't otherwise be available, wouldn't have been for the CARES, so.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Commissioner Whalen.
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell.
Aye.
Commissioner Haney.
Jim?
Commissioner Mojo.
Aye.
Commissioner Gross.
I'm going to note this right now.
All right. Thank you very much for the feedback.
Okay, anything further? We're adjourned.